No adjustments.
No adjustments. And this afternoon, we do have a special recognition of our county employees, and I'll turn it over to the manager to kick that off.
Absolutely. This is something new that we're doing this year. Our Board of Commissioners expressed the fact that they did want to honor and recognize our employees that not only have served our country and are veterans, but also serve our county as well, so veterans. And we have a certificate for you, but please don't leave when you get it, because we do want everybody to gather up here after we call out all the names and do a photo with the board, if that's okay. So Ms. Snyder, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Brian Burns.
Would you like to say the branch that you serve?
Yeah, also, did I give you different options?
Thank you.
Hank Green.
Okay.
Chad Lyes.
United States Marine Corps.
United States Marine Corps.
Josh Levine. United States Air Force. Fred Tapp. Hugh Smith.
U.S. Air Force.
Robert Dan Talbert. Jonathan Williams.
Thank you. U.S. Army.
And Brian Snyder. U.S. Navy.
Okay, so if all of you could come up behind the rails and stand right up here, get a great photo.
Just don't leave right yet. So I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner.
Always go everywhere else. Do I need this microphone? Guys, thank you. Service is a calling regardless of where you do it. Each of you wore the uniform of your chosen branch of service. Each served honorably. But you continue to serve today. You serve the people of Iredell County. You just serve at a different level. Serve in a different way. Each of you, I know most of you, you each, you continue to serve. Yes, you've got to feed your family, but you have a servant's heart, that you want to make a difference each day in the lives of the men and women and the families that you come in contact with. And I'm very appreciative, very proud to be called each of you that stood here and those that were unable to attend, to call you my brothers and my sisters. And thank you for the sacrifices, the times you were away from your family, the times that you missed brothers or sisters or your own children or your spouses, your anniversaries, your birthdays, whatever it happened to be. Always remember, always carry that with you and be proud of your service. But we're equally proud of the service you continue to provide to Iredell County citizens.
Scotty, you got something?
I take it very seriously how much we appreciate you. We really do. You know, I did not serve, but a lot of my family served, and I've got several that's retired. A lot of them in Vietnam. Met a man the other day, he just turned, I think it was 90, and he was in Vietnam, and he's still in great shape. But we appreciate every one of you. Thank you.
Jean?
I'll just echo that. We appreciate your service, and I think you ought to be celebrated every day of the year instead of one or two days a year. And also thank your family, because your family served with you and sacrificed as you sacrificed for our country. And I wish our country was more grateful as a whole. I think a lot of our younger generations don't know the sacrifices that previous generations have made to give them the right to complain or have a First Amendment right and all those things. So I'll just say thank you for all you do. Thank you for continuing to serve our citizens of this county. We are grateful, and you made a difference, even if you're not honored as you should be. Thank you.
Melissa.
So life is full of choices, forks in the road, and you chose to take the military fork. What comes to mind when you say, how did the military impact your life? The choices that you made, the training pushing you outside your comfort zone, doing things that you didn't even think were possible? What did it teach you? What did you bring back and then to serve right here in our county? It's part of your story. It's part of who you are. And I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to speak with everyone and hear where you served, what you did, because that is something you carry with you every day, made you a stronger person, and we benefit from that right here in Iredell County, the skill set, the training, what you did with your hands, what you did with your mind, what you did with your heart. Not only do you serve your country from the past generations, you took that torch, you ran with it, you pass it on to the next generation. It's an inspiration. We live in an amazing country to have the choices that we have, and I am so blessed, we're so blessed as a board, that you chose that military fork in the road. Thank you.
County Manager, you got anything? You want to?
Good, go ahead.
Just, you can't beat what they said, but sincerely, sincerely, thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your dedication. People don't understand that the world we live in, that we've got it made in this country, and a lot of people take that for granted. A lot of people do. We can lay down at night, don't have to worry about things that other people do in other countries, and I'll cross this world, and you're the reason that we don't have to worry about that. So thank you from everybody up here, and especially me. Thank you.
You good?
I do want to show appreciation to our Veteran Service Office for helping coordinate this, our HR office, and our clerk to the board. And where's Darcy? She's, there she is, and Darcy Heath. So this group put this together. This is something, and we're interested in feedback. If this is something that you appreciate and would like to continue, this is something new that we've started this year, just to make sure that, you know, being a veteran is something that you don't get enough thanks and appreciation. The board has said that. But we want to make sure that we acknowledge and recognize our employees that have not only served our country, but also serve our citizens. So please feel free to share feedback to the group. We want to make sure that you understand you're appreciated, and not just in the month of November, right after Veterans Day, but all the time. So, but thank you to the group that helped coordinate all of this as well.
Brittany, are we going to do a rock wall next year or run tanks? Up for feedback.
Okay, following down our agenda, and if you need to leave, go ahead and leave. If you want to hang out, you can hang out. Following down our agenda, we do not have an appointment before the board, but we do have a public hearing for tonight on a rezon, an alternative county manager, so she can get Matthew Todd up here to discuss that for just a second.
Absolutely. As Chair Conley said, we do have one rezoning request, and that's to rezon approximately 51.525 acres along Josie Road. And Mr. Todd is here. He can give you a quick briefing, but the public hearing will actually be at the 6:00. But, Mr. Todd?
Oh, good evening. Do you want me to go over, or just do you want me to ask if there's any questions?
The high spots.
Specifically, if, because this is something that the board has heard previously, and then it was polled, and it's come back. If you could talk about the differences between what they heard previously and what is coming back to them, that would be, I think, important to note.
Sure. The first time this request was submitted, it was just a straight rezoning request, not conditional. Definitely some concerns expressed at that point. It did go through Planning Board with a 5-4 recommendation to approve it at that time. But again, like I said, there was some concern, a lot of the neighbors in the area concerned. So the applicant did withdraw it, started the conditional process, which took a little time, held a public input meeting at our office, actually, where some of the neighbor, the neighbors came to offer, to have questions and offer input. He then resubmitted a conditional request with the conditions that are outlined in the report, and I can show them up on the screen, too. They're a little jumbled up, but it started with just these four conditions, to have an engineered stormwater plan, downward lighting, a berm along the northern side of the property that is adjacent to several residential, and then the truck parking facility, which is part of the request, is not conditioned to only a truck parking facility, but would have its access on Tomlin Mill Road. After Planning Board saw these conditions and got the, and the applicant got the unfavorable recommendation from Planning Board on the second go-around, the applicant did add two additional conditions that were not part of what Planning Board saw, and that was a little further clarification on the truck traffic access than just any truck traffic, because there's also been mentioned some type of truck wash or mechanic on site, that any truck traffic, any business associated with trucks would access off of Tomlin Mill and not Josie Road. And then also, the applicant went through the list of those permitted uses and did exclude those that are shown in that condition. And I will, I'll go ahead and highlight as well with this request, it ties into our text amendments that are later on on the agenda. But one thing I often point out with the rezonings is when it comes to the, this one having a Planning Board recommendation for denial. Under the new state law, the statute, there's no longer a waiting period for somebody to resubmit an application. Used to, there were different scenarios depending on if they withdrew an application, if they had an unfavorable vote, but this past year, the state took, turned right around and applied again. And I'll touch on that during the text amendment, and it's just coincidence that it's also relatable to the rezoning that we have. So I would be happy to answer any specific questions, and then I'll give the full report at 6:00.
We were doing 20 acres before, and they wouldn't tell us what they were doing with the 30. So now you're saying the whole 50 acres is going to be done this way, but does that mean the whole 50s?
To a certain area, so it was the full 50 acres the first time. It's the full 50 acres again, but again, not dedicated for the 50 to be one use over another.
But 50 acres would mean?
Would be rezoned and allowed to be truck parking or any of those HB uses that are not excluded.
Are we talking about 400 tractor trailers or 500 on 50 acres?
In addition to that, the piece of property that we're looking at is only able to be connected by Tomlin Mill through additional property, which is not owned by the group. So that, if that were to be rezoned?
The future Lowe's truck stop, maybe.
Attorney Valdez, if you want to clarify what I just said?
I was, well, one, I think that they offered a condition that the access would be on Tomlin Mill. But second, I would maybe take this as information and save your discussion and questions for the 6:00 hour.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
Jumping into our administrative matters, turn them over to the county manager. We've got a long list.
We do have a healthy list. So the first item under Administrative Matters is a request from the Health Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 14 to accept the Duke Energy Foundation grant. And Ms., oh, I'm sorry, I had Shannon Thompson on here to present.
Good evening. My name is Jai Davidson. I'm the Preparedness Coordinator at the Health Department. And again, this is a request to accept the $5,000 grant awarded from the Duke Energy Foundation. This is to support the Iredell County Health Department's Emergency Preparedness Initiative. The primary goals are not just about distributing free emergency starter kits. This will allow us to strengthen our community preparedness through intentional outreach, practical education, and direct engagement with residents. These kits will come in a drawstring bag with items such as flashlights, whistles, first aid, that is the biggest thing. One of the gaps that I've found is that people don't plan either to shelter in place or to evacuate. And so being able to bring people together in a workshop and get those conversations started, that's how we make sure that people are prepared. This will be, these kits will go out with workshops. I've talked with a lot of our community partners, and we are able to get into free spaces to be able to. So I'll start advertising that type of stuff. And this is not limited to those with medical vulnerabilities, such as those that are on oxygen and insulin or LVADs or any type of mobility devices. There are a lot of things that people don't think about during that time. So combining it with these very intentional 90-minute workshops, even though I can talk for three hours about it, but for 90 minutes, if I can get somebody's attention, I can help you build a plan.
Any big, any questions? Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a request from Human Resources for approval of the Public Official Bonds. And Ms. Melissa Petit is here to make this presentation to the board. And I will say, you do have a handout on the dais before you, which details out the bonds.
Good afternoon. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute 58-72-50, the Board of Commissioners are required to annually approve the bonds for the Finance Director, Tax Collector, Deputy Tax Collector, Sheriff, and Registered Deeds. The bonds are issued through Travelers Casualty Insurance Company of America, and the cost to carry the coverage is a total of $2,804 per year. Those listed requiring bonds coverage are as follows. $1 million is Caroline Taylor, the Finance Director. $50,000 is the Tax Collector Division, which includes Bill Furch's Tax Collector, Susan Warren, Assistant Tax Collector, Tax Collections Supervisor, Anne Gray Ray, Assistant Tax Collector, Deliquid Tax Collections, Shannon Lester, Collection Systems Specialist, Anita Hirsch, Tax Program Assistant, Rachel Chambers, Tax Program Assistant, Jennifer Sirison, Tax Program Specialist, Laura Stroud, Tax Program Specialist, and a $10,000 bond for Darren Campbell, Sheriff, and Renee Holland, Registered Deeds. I would like to request the Board's approval to issue these bonds, and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Melissa? Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
The next item is a request from Planning and Development to consider calling for a public hearing on December the 2nd, 2025, at 6:00 PM regarding a text amendment to the Land Development Code for multiple sections. And Mr. Matthew Todd is here to make this presentation to the board.
Oh, yes, this is just a call. I'll go over some of the highlights of this text amendment. It can get pretty wordy. But our goal essentially was to add some flexibility with sections of the code, add some clarity with sections of the code. Also looking at, thinking about the end user of our ordinance to make it as user-friendly as we can, and also updating it to some state law changes. But we've had some confusing charts in the ordinance. You'll see them in the packet. They've been in there since '09, and it's really, was supposed to be a summary of the permitted uses in each district. A lot of people think that is the only permitted uses in each district. We've dealt with it for a long time, and it's just, it's not working any better. So it's time to remove those. Nothing's changing with the content. It's just, people were referring to those and getting misled on what was allowed in certain zoning districts. So just trying to take care of that. We did add a few uses to the table, common things that we hear about. Another, we added some flexibility for accessory buildings, accessory dwelling units. It's a very common thing these days. Everyone has an accessory dwell, not everyone, but more interest in accessory dwelling units. We've limited the size for a number of years, and with really the size of homes that are out there, the 650 is what it currently is. We're proposing to increase that to 1,000 square feet. Just keep it in line with kind of the trends that we're seeing. Another thing, in the last few years with major subdivisions, we added some open space requirements, but the one part we didn't think about was a commercial development can also be a major subdivision. And the intent of having open space with a commercial subdivision didn't seem to make sense, especially when you start talking about watershed issues. So not requiring open space if it's a commercial, major subdivision. So making that change. Also, something we've wrestled with for years is someone wanting to build a house and live in their camper RV while the house is under construction. And it's something we supported with the, with the cost of housing. It makes a lot of sense for people to be able to do that. And it was happening on a certain level, but we couldn't permit it as such. So now with this change, we'd actually be able to permit that to happen. And it's just, if you've got an active permit to build a house, you'd be able to have that. So there is a time limit on it, but it's based on having that permit valid for the construction. And I will say, that is one thing I think the state has kicked around a couple of times with legislation. So sooner or later, that was probably going to be mandated, that we require it from the state anyway. It's not made it out of the last couple of years of proposed legislation, but it's a good, we felt it was a good thing to add to our code. And then the other thing is with solar facilities, the decommissioning of those facilities, it's definitely been something we've struggled with for years, but effective, I think just a couple of months ago, and it'd been worked on for a long time, was that the state will take over the decommissioning of those facilities if they're larger than a 2-megawatt facility. And that means holding any type of financial guarantee that they're decommissioned the way that they're supposed to. We felt when this question just first came up a couple of years ago that the state was better equipped to handle this. So I'm glad to see that that's the direction that it ended up, instead of them putting it back on the counties. We still left some language in there to address the facilities that are smaller than a 2-megawatt facility, but most of the ones that you're going to see are going to be larger. And the other thing with, I mentioned the waiting period on resubmit of applications. That was House Bill 926. But making the adjustments in the code to keep us in line with those changes. That's, that's in a nutshell what the text amendment was about. Planning Board did vote 8-0 to recommend approval. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Can we, were you and staff before this public hearing? Because what I'm hearing is the state is looking for some feedback from, you know, when they tried to do the House Bill 765, I think was the number, and then Senate Bill 205. Part of their goal, from my understanding, was to try to make some processes more user-friendly. And I don't know that, if you've looked at some of those, from those specific bills, to see if there's anything we can integrate into our text amendment that, or even our expectations from you and staff to the applicants to make their, what we're trying to do is limit, I guess, the number of times they have to come meet with you guys and then go back and get something changed. Because part of the argument was then, that I, that I remember hearing was, it costs them money every time they have to go back to their architect, design, change anything. And part of that was that they complained about, I think, the timing some of the processes took, time-wise, and then sometimes all of our staff had not already looked at everything upfront to maybe push meetings to where they have less interaction with you guys. Know was come in and find out all the things they may have to do upfront in less meetings, I guess, would be the way to say that. So can y'all look at that? I think we talked about that back then, to see if there's anything we could change on your recommendation to make it more user-friendly for the applicants and all.
Certainly. I mean, my impression is, what I heard the most part with that legislation is it wasn't directed toward our rules. It's, is the Chapel Hills of the world that take two years to get through a rezoning process.
Right, right.
We've got timeframe limitations already in there that direct how fast we have to process something. So there were some things like that that weren't going to affect us anyway. But we can certainly take a look.
Just some of the specific thing, I think, from a developer, too, that I interacted with during that process, that was trying to support what Raleigh was trying to force down our throat, was that, I guess there needs to be more clarity, maybe between the applicant and staff. Maybe it's because, you know, you and I have talked about that before, where if somebody comes in, they need to know what they're going to have to be expected to do from A to Z in the beginning, and they feel like we're adding things to them sometimes that they weren't aware of or didn't remember, if there was a phone conversation and nothing in writing. I'd like for our side, the county, to be able to verify that we gave an applicant, whether they do this once in a lifetime, building something, or whether they do it for a living, to be able to verify what we told them is going to be expected of them and what that's going to cost. Because I know there's conversations that happen that people selectively either forget intentionally or they really just don't remember, but it makes it look like we never told them. And I'm not saying it's your fault. I'm just saying I'd like for us to be able to verify what we have told people that they're going to be expected to do from A to Z in these processes. Just look at that. We may have everything in place that you're satisfied with, but I just wanted to remind you that was some of the things that came up during the discussions when we had to deal with that.
Sure.
Any other questions? Do we have to?
Just a brief one. Where will, and it's going to say we're calling for the public hearing, where will citizens be able to take a look at what the changes will be ahead of time? Website?
It's on our website.
It's on our website. It is.
Is it underneath Planning?
Yes, underneath the Planning website.
Okay.
Clarify that, won't, won't you read off, I guess, the consent agenda?
And they can also get it off our website through the Agenda packet. It will be on the website after this meeting, so they can get it.
Okay.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a request from Cooperative Extension to approve Budget Amendment Number 17 to appropriate donations to purchase and install a shed to house supplies. Ms. Melinda Roberts is here to make this presentation to the board.
Hello, how are y'all doing?
And I will say again, you do have supporting information on the dais before you for this item.
Yes, can y'all hear me okay? Yeah. We are in the, well, I'll give you a brief update of the greenhouse project. I've met with Antonia and Caroline, and, or I've been working with, as well as Chris with Facility Services. And Chris and I sat down in a fairly lengthy meeting and went through all of the things that needed to happen, from land prep work, well, it started with the bids and how to distribute the bids or how to organize them, and then the land prep work, as well as greenhouse ordering and construction, and then finishing the project with a new fence and making all the pathways and everything ADA compliant to correspond or correlate with the level of accessibility with the greenhouse. So we have done that, and we'll come in in December to the meeting and present all that information to you guys as well. But in the meantime, and moving forward, Chris did recommend that we go ahead and purchase a shed, which will be used for storing of all of the pots and soil and equipment needed in the greenhouse. And in order to develop a purchase order, we need to get the money transferred from a revenue account to the expense account in the amount of $3,548. And we are hoping to purchase the shed from Blue Ridge Structures, which is a company that was recommended by Chris.
Any questions? Do we have consent?
Consent.
Any more questions?
I'm just excited about this and look forward to the updates. Could you keep, I like how you'll keep us informed as we go along.
Oh, absolutely. I felt that. I felt that it was time to come and tell you. We do have the, the, and actually, Chris and Antonia are wonderful to work with, and they had a great recommendation to split, instead of doing one big project, we split it into two projects and did the prep work as one, which is out to bid right now as we speak. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Y'all have a good night.
Thank you. The next item is a request from Emergency Communications for approval of Budget Amendment Number 11 to appropriate fund balance from the General Fund to repay the Emergency Telephone System Fund for ineligible expenses made according to the final PSE report for fiscal year 25. And Ms. Caroline Taylor is here to make this presentation to the board.
Per year, we submit a report to the 911 Board of all of the revenues and expenditures for the 911 Telephone Service System Fund. And they review all of the expenses and determine what's eligible, what's ineligible. A piece of it is the, is what we call the functions. It's the pieces, the indirect expenses, the addressing, and the things that we pay for out of the General Fund. It's a expense that they, in the 911 Fund that reimburses. When they went through and assessed all of the functions that we did, they deemed $7,309.36 were ineligible. And so the General Fund now has to appropriate fund balance to repay the 911 Fund for those expenses from fiscal year 25.
Any, any questions? Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a request from EMS for approval of Budget Amendment Number 12 and to accept a grant in the amount of $6,000 from the State's ABC Board. And Ms. Caroline Taylor is here to present this item as well.
EMS came a few months ago and requested to apply for an ABC, ABC Board Funding Grant that would support the community, sorry, the Community Response Support Team. They would use the funds for educational materials, as well as different supplies for that team. They were awarded $6,000. So we're, we are just requesting to accept the $6,000 grant and appropriate those funds.
That's easy. Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a request from the Library to apply for a continuing education scholarship grant from the State Library of North Carolina in the amount of $2,175. And Ms. Julie Moore is here to make this presentation to the board.
Good evening. As Manager Milton said, I'm here to request to apply for a scholarship grant through the State Library of North Carolina. Each public library system is allowed to apply for up to two scholarships per year for staff members to travel. So earlier, Grace Schirmerhorn was able to attend a conference, and I'm looking to attend the Public Library Association Conference. It happens every other year. And I, when I reviewed the schedule of events, there were lots of applicable sessions that align with our current strategic plan and some of our goals. So I thought it would be a great opportunity for me to attend. Last time I tried to apply for a scholarship grant, COVID happened. It was awarded, but then I didn't get to go. So hopefully this time, we won't have a repeat performance. But I'm happy to answer, answer any questions that you may have.
Anything for Julie.
Now, I looked forward to hearing things that you gather and information you put together, could even combine with the celebration, what, the 250?
There are sessions that align with the 250th in there, too.
That's why I wondered if you were able to investigate that as well.
And there's ones that have to do with outreach, learning, working with English as a Second Language patrons, working with staff who are neurodivergent, which we have several of those at the library. So I was very excited to see. I actually had to choose, pick and choose at certain concurrent sessions to only get to attend one, so.
Decisions, decisions.
Decisions, decisions.
Thank you. The next item is a request from the Department of Social Services for the approval of a three-year agreement for the renewal of contracts for Panda, firewalls, and authorization for the county manager to sign. Mr. Neil Scanlon is here to make this presentation to the board and team.
Yes. Running everybody.
Running the whole team for this.
Yeah, yeah, that's how important this is. I've never been here before, but decided all to come together, solidarity. Good afternoon. DSS is requesting approval of five separate three-year agreements from our Technology Contract Services Line. This includes two fireboxes for our Statesville-Moresville DSS locations, which provides frontline security against malware, phishing, scams, ransomware, that type of stuff. It enables hybrid and Mooreville workers to remote back into our main infrastructure and allows traffic to flow through our secure business VPN between both sites. We also have three Panda Security Services agreements that we're looking to get approved. The first one is Panda Full Encryption, which ensures we are meeting our state mandates on hard drive encryption. We have a Panda Patch, which allows our IT team to install and monitor critical patches and updates for essential software. We also have our Panda Data Defensive 360 Service, which provides endpoint protection against malware and real-time threats and exploits. These products are suggested by JSCM Group, which are firewall and exploit experts who we've used for about 15 years now-ish, that we trust with their recommendations. These items were budgeted for about $82,000 for this fiscal year. The total cost of these three-year agreements will be $82,858.50 after our 10% discount that we will get. These contracts will save us an expected $12,000 over the three-year agreement, and we will probably actually save more due to 5% increases year over year for these services. Any questions?
Any questions?
Glad y'all were doing it, not me.
Okay, everybody get on consent?
Consent.
Very much.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next item is a, I know, right? The next item is a request from Solid Waste to apply for the Helene Recovery Recycling Infrastructure Grant. Mr. Teddy Bowler is here to make this presentation to the board.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
The Solid Waste Department seeks the board's approval to apply for the North Carolina Helene Recovery Recycling Infrastructure Grant. The award amount is up to $5 million. There's no match requirement for this grant. The application period ends at January 30th of 2026. If awarded these funds, we would use the funding to, for building our recycling and employee training facility, which will house our electronics recycling, white goods facility, HHW lithium battery recycling, and so on and so on. So multi-use building. Anybody that's used our current white goods facility, you know, we added several other recycling components to it, and we're out of space there. So we're actually planning for that project right now, and this grant came about, and so would like to ask for your approval to apply.
Any questions for Teddy? Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank you, sir.
The next request from Finance for approval of Budget Amendment Number 16 to appropriate funds received for an easement at Lake Norman and Aridale Statesville School Capital Outlay. And Ms. Caroline Taylor is here to make this presentation to the board.
We received $5,000 earlier this month for an easement at Lake Norman High School, and so we are just requesting to appropriate those funds to Aridale Statesville Schools' capital, so that they can spend the funds out of their capital funds, how they deem. So I'll answer any questions.
Any questions?
And I'll just state, the reason this is coming to you is because we still own the property until we satisfy the debt of it, so it's kind of a pass-through through us, back to them.
Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank you. So Ms. Taylor also has the next few items. The next one is a request from Finance to adopt a resolution designating a deputy finance officer and authorizing signatures on dispersments. Ms. Taylor?
So in the absence of the Finance Director, we need to have appointed a deputy finance director that can, just for the limited purpose of signing checks or drafts, or executing a pre-audit or dispersments. So we have to have somebody appointed that can sign those things in the case that I'm not here. So we are requesting to appoint the Daniel Edward, which is the Assistant Finance Director, to be a deputy finance director or officer. Additionally, as required by general statutes, all checks and drafts must have two signatures, one being the Finance Director or a deputy finance officer, the second signature being someone that's appointed. Right now, the county manager, Beth Milton, is the second signature on all dispersments. So we are requesting to have Beth Milton, the county manager, as well as Rodney Harris, the deputy county manager, to be able to sign. So we are requesting approval of a resolution naming Daniel Edward as the Deputy Finance Director, and Beth Milton and Rodney Harris as the authorized secondary signatures.
I have a question for Lisa. If we're authorizing them to do that, do we need to also get bonds for those two people?
I don't think we need bonds for, not for, not for this.
I just didn't know if they're covered under you or Beth. I didn't know if we needed, just, I just thought about, we just approved that bond. If they're authorized to do that, do they need any kind of coverage?
I, the county manager typically does not have a bond.
Right.
Not assigners. Is that what you're asking? Assigners, do they need to be?
Yeah, right. I didn't know if he needed one specifically financed, or is he covered under your million?
No, it's, I'm sorry, assigners, they don't need to be.
Okay. Okay. I just didn't know. I know we approved the bond, so I just know, give them that authority. I didn't know if they needed some coverage.
Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor has the next item, and that's a request from the Finance Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 13 to allocate additional capital funds to Aridale Statesville Schools and Morseville Graded School District based on the actual sales taxes received for fiscal year 2425. Ms. Taylor?
So the funding formula that was approved by the, the board back in, I think, fiscal year 2020, allowed for capital funds that are allocated to the schools to be based on the sales tax that is received. So every year when we prepare the budget, we estimate what sales tax will be. And then in the fall, when we know what our true sales tax actuals came in, we go and we shore up, true up, anything that is less than what was budgeted. So we are requesting to appropriate an additional $2,241,173 to Aridale Statesville Schools and $617,393 to Morseville Graded Schools, to true up their capital from the FY25 sales tax.
Do, are they aware of these funds yet? Because I know when I watched their last meeting, their budget was going to be short about $2 million. I just didn't know if they had taken that into account.
This is, and I will say, this is something we do every year, and we've done every year. I don't know if they have the exact number, but it is something that Adam has included in his overall estimation. But he estimates kind of like what we estimate, what this true up will be, and I'm not sure what his estimate is versus what the actual is.
I just was curious, because I know they were going to be short some, and I didn't know if that was figured in anywhere. Just curious.
These, for Aridale Statesville, I have shared these numbers with Mark, but that, Mark Shankuric, but they have not been shared, to my knowledge, with Adam yet.
Okay.
But as soon as the board approves, Caroline will certainly send a notification to both finance officers of both school systems.
Any other questions? Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank you. The next item is a request from Aridale Statesville Schools to approve an easement for Energy United to provide underground utilities to Weathers Creek High School. This is something, and, and I told Mark Shankuric, he did not need to come to the meeting to make this presentation, because this is something that went before the Board of Education. They have already blessed it. Again, it is coming to the Board of Commissioners, because we own the property, and this is to put in the utilities for the new construction of Weathers Creek High School. So it has already been reviewed and approved by the Board of Education.
Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank you. The next item is a request from Tax Administration for approval of the October 2025 releases and refunds, and there are no commissioner names on this list.
Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank you. The next item, which is the largest item in your packet, is a request from Administration to approve the minutes from the January 17th, 2023 joint meeting with Aridale Statesville Schools, May 12th through the 14th, 2025 budget work sessions, October 9th, 2025 joint meeting with the Board of Health, and finally, October 25th, or 21st, 2025 Board of Commissioner regular meeting. All of these minutes are in, in your packet.
Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
You didn't ask if there was any adjustment?
Do you have any corrections to those minutes?
Any questions?
Or any questions?
I want to get John a harder time, yeah.
I will tell you.
We're crunched on time today, Jamie.
All right, all right. Sorry, John.
John labored over those budget work session minutes, because if you remember, he was in Clark School, so he had to do it all from a recording. So John, hats off to you. So the next item was a request from Administration for approval of Budget Amendment Number 15 to amend the Facility Improvement Fund project ordinance and to approve the Government Center Renovation Project Design Agreement and authorize the county manager to sign. I will say, there is one clarification on this. Still needs to be reviewed by our attorney, so what I would ask is that any approval, I would be contingent on final approval of the county attorney and acceptance by the, the provider. Mr. Sleavy is here to make this presentation to the board.
Thank you. It is, it's great to be back, or down to the final phase, we hope, of the renovation of this building. This is Phase 6. Just for your information, Phase 1 was the roof. Phase 2 was waterproofing the basement and foundations. Phase 3 was basement work. Phase 4 was the entire renovation of the exterior. And Phase 5 was the new ADA accessible entryway, lobby, and everything that you've seen on that side. So now we're down to Phase 6, which is the interior. We didn't want to do Phase 6 until we had the building dry. And now I think we have done all, you have done all that you can. We've done all that we can to dry in the building. So through the, through the RFQ process and the RFQ evaluation team, CPL Architects was selected as the, is to, was selected to be the designer of the mechanical, electrical, the, all the finishes and the plumbing of the, of this renovation project. This project will complete the eight-year, think about eight years, process, some of you lived through all of it, to renovate this, this courthouse, this historical courthouse. First of all, before I go any further, is, are there any questions on the renovation of what we're going to do or when we may do it? I'm sorry, I don't have PowerPoint for you today, because I just love to show you things, but, but this is mainly for design. We will be bringing back and sharing with, through, through the manager to you as appropriate things that we're doing. One of the most challenging things, Rodney knows this, the most challenging thing is colors, and selecting the correct colors. And Rodney and I, neither one have anything to do with colors. So, but there is a group that enjoys to work with colors for this new renovation project. And another thing I will say, the last time that it was renovated was 1988 or '89, and it is what we see today. Okay? So, tonight, you're being asked to approve Budget Amendment Number 15, which was in your packet. Our Finance Director, Caroline Taylor, is here to answer any questions on that, and also amend the FIF, Facilities Improvement Capital Project Ordinance, and also to appoint our county manager to sign the agreement with CPNL. Now, that agreement was on your desk, or at your seats, and if you, if you will turn, if you like to turn to the third page from the back, which is Page 5 of the Professional Fee Proposal, and, 4 and 5, actually. 4 has, at the bottom, kind of starts it off, and then we, and then it moves on into Page 5, for a total of $369,553. And it's itemized what that is. I think you're familiar with CPNL. They're doing the, the entire Fairgrounds Project. They did your Hall of Justice Space Needs Study, and they mostly out of Charlotte with some consultants in different areas. Any questions on that part? Okay. So what we're be, what you're being asked to do is to approve Budget Amendment Number 15, amend the FIF, the Capital Project Ordinance, and to appoint our county manager, once it's been reviewed and, and approved by the county attorney, to sign the agreement with CPNL.
Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
The next item is a request from Administration to approve the 2026 Board of Commissioner Meeting Dates. They're in your packet. This does not include any retreat dates. This is just your regular first and third meetings of the month, with the exception of July and November, because we only have one of those meeting dates.
Consent. Consent.
Thank you. The final item is the county construction project update that's in your packet, and that's just for informational purposes only, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have consent?
Consent. Consent.
Thank you. And we have now finished our three pages of administrative matters.
That's a long one.
That's a long one.
Brings us down to the announcement of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions, and do you want to hit those, or you want to wait till the 6?
I can wait till the 6.
Okay, we'll wait till the 6 for that one. Does, we also have an appointment tonight for the Recreation Advisory Board, we'll do that tonight at 6. Does anyone have any unfinished business at the 4 o'clock hour? Public comment period is tonight at our 6 o'clock hour. Any commissioner updates? Any new business? County manager report, you want to wait till 6?
Wait till 6, yes, sir.
Brings us down to closed session. We do have a closed session item, economic development in accordance to North Carolina General Statute 143 31811A4 to discuss this afternoon. Do we have a motion to enter into closed session after a five-minute recess?
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Stroud, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in closed session following a five-minute recess.